Time is six oh one, I'll call the meeting of the Etoka City Council order, ask everyone to rise as we do the pledge of allegiance and the invitation. Place flag, salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow with me? Dear heavenly father, we just come to you tonight, God, and thank you, God, for another day, God, that we're able to be here, God, and I just thank you, uh, God, for the weather and that you've sent us, God, and I just pray that, God, that we would just look around and, uh, look at the things that we're, we've been blessed with, God, that you've shown your favor on us, and I just pray, God, that we, we, uh, don't overlook those things, God, and, uh, know that they come from you, and I pray, God, tonight, that if we go through this meeting, that you give us wisdom and, um, uh, and lead, lead our decisions in, in the way we need to make those, and, uh, I just pray all these things in Jesus' name.
Well, good evening to everyone, thank you for all for joining us, and at this time with the court call, roll please.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Ms. Poe?
Here.
Mr. Cheryl?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here. Let's move down to the agenda, this is the public comment time, this is anything that is not on the agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we will move down to the business agenda, item number one, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of July twenty first, twenty twenty five.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion and second, roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number two, discussion and or action regarding accepting or rejecting the city manager's report.
That is on attachment number two, if anyone has any questions.
How was your conference?
Good.
And what was the date on the stage again, August twenty seventh?
Uh, probably by the time they get through cleaning up the parking lot and everything, be the first part next week.
Oh, I thought we had a date.
We do.
Oh, that's a, a picture for the, to kick off the, um, the forty-eight hours thing, I think, isn't that?
Like a ribbon cutting?
Yeah. That had been changed, I think, or?
I don't know.
Here is not able to make that day, so I'm waiting for Heather to let me know what the new date would be.
So nothing's happening on the twenty seventh?
No, not as of yet.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other questions for the city manager?
No, I recommend, I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion and second, roll call, please.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number three, discussion and or action on approving or rejecting the payment of blank purchase orders for the city of Etoka for the month of August.
Those are recurring blanket POs, uh, they're on attachment number three.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion and second, roll call, please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number four, discussion and or action on establishing and constructing certain bus stops within the city of Etoka.
I was gonna bring a map and did not get it updated, they didn't send it to me to update it one. So we, we don't actually have a designated stop, 'cause I'm still waiting on one, I have all of them but one stop, I need a stop down California, and I have somebody that I'm gonna ask if maybe I can use their land. So, can I table this, but I wanna put it back on the next agenda, and, 'cause I should be able to talk to her this week.
Sure.
'Cause I was waiting on one last.
And you're gonna bring a map showing all the locations and then kind of, any kind of renderings of what the stops would look like at those side of the property?
Yeah, 'cause they already ordered the benches, so we'll have benches and then we will have, uh, poles that go in and signs that go on poles.
Okay, so are they gonna be like a little light on the pole or anything, lighting around?
No lights or anything, 'cause, um, we're not getting that fancy.
Oh, I didn't know if we had like a s-
How light, how light?
It's gonna run until eleven.
At nine?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't know if we needed like a solar light or something that would shine on that.
Well.
They'd have to be solar, because we wouldn't have no power.
Mm-hmm. But, I mean, can I put a light on a pole then, just right there, 'cause the only spot I'm thinking is downhill.
Figure it out at the next meeting, right, Johnny?
Okay.
Okay.
I will ask them at our next meeting, but we, we've been waiting on one spot and, uh, they did get confirmation till today that we can't do it there, so I'll have another spot that I'm gonna see about.
Okay, very good. All right, well, we'll replace this item and have it on the next agenda. Item number five, discussion and or action to approve or reject the request submitted by Grace Fellowship Church, Inc., to change the current R one single-family residential to R two general residential for lots one and two and the fifty feet of lot, west fifty feet of lots three and four, block eighty-six, Etoka City, Etoka, Oklahoma. The recommendation from the planning and zoning commission was in favor of the request of change. So, Larry, yeah, come on up.
I didn't see their, the copy of their voting, I mean, they, or did I, did I, what did I miss?
I don't think there was a copy of their voting there, no, there was just the original request. How they, how I submitted it to, uh, the planning and zoning commission. Yes, it was.
What's your name?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. McPherson Epstein.
Okay.
But it was unanimous.
Yeah, and next time I could, who, we'll see a copy of that.
I'm sorry.
Next time I just like to see a copy of it. Sorry.
No problem. My turn?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Um, this particular property, as y'all are probably aware, is where the old Etoka High School used to be. Um, my church, uh, got this property through, uh, trade and, uh, a buyout from the city of Etoka, uh, concerning the rebuild project. My church used to be over here on the corner of Penn and A Street.
Yes, sir.
And, um, Carol, who used to work here a few guys, approached me several times about purchasing our property, and, uh, we really weren't for it. But to be honest with you, we were happy where we were, but, uh, through several times that we, uh, talked, uh, felt like that, uh, to help the city that, and, uh, meeting with her, that we decided that we'd go ahead and, and do some trading with the city and, and, uh, let the city purchase our property and, and we got this particular high school property in on trade, uh, during this transaction. During that time, it's been, I don't know, two or three years ago, I guess, I don't know how, ever how long rebuilds has been there, um, prior to that. Um, we are, at that time, we had plans on building a new facility and a church up there on the hill to replace what we had lost here, and, uh, it was during the time of COVID and, uh, if y'all remember how COVID was, things kind of went downhill, uh, we, uh, we lost a lot of our regular attendees and, um, not only through death, but people quit coming, and, uh, our financial situation changed, uh, during that time, it seemed like interest rates went up, uh, all building materials went sky high, and we decided that, uh, we, it wouldn't be a good idea to build right then. Uh, over time, well, we, we continued to meet in, uh, in the, out at the, uh, community center, the city community center for about a year, and after that time, we decided that, uh, something's gonna have to change before we build on that property. I was up brush hogging that property, uh, a month or so ago and, and, uh, I noticed a guy watching me sitting in a pickup out there on the street as I was making rounds of my tractor, and, uh, he later came around to the front and told me who he was, that he was a contractor for the Choctaw Nation, and, uh, wanted to know if we would sell that property. I told him I hadn't really thought about it, but, uh, we'd consider it, and I was gonna talk to my elders and people of the church, and we would decide something, I'd let him know, so I made some contacts with our church members and elders and, uh, we decided that, uh, we'd at least talk to him about it, and we might sell, and through some negotiating back and forth, uh, we ended up, uh, reaching an agreement that, uh, he representing the Choctaw Nation, uh, would hopefully buy our property for a certain dollar figure, and, uh, if we could get the zoning changed on the property, it was R one at that time. Uh, what they were wanting to do was to build a couple of sets of duplexes up there for battered women, Choctaw Nation was, and, uh, that's why we needed the zoning changed. Uh, we'll say this, as y'all are well aware, uh, we have all the lots on that side of the street that, that face the street, a full block long. Property behind it's the old football field where nobody lives, there's no housing. Directly across the street east of us, there's two, uh, rent houses, that's the only thing on that street besides us and them. I know there's other houses in the neighborhood, but that's the closest ones. Um, I've also, also thought about that if we sold the property to them, that, uh, it would even enhance, uh, police patrol up there, because Choctaw Nation has their own, uh, police department, as you know, and, and, uh, I think would, would add patrols even to that particular area, instead of being a detriment uh, to that particular area, it might be an enhancement, so that's kind of where we are, and that's why I'm asking for the zoning change. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to, to answer them.
There wasn't any protests, I guess, in the meeting, in the?
Not during the meeting.
And the neighbors?
Neighbors, okay. I mean, they didn't have any requests or anything, okay.
So this is the same housing setup that we looked at at the other location, number on fifteenth?
So your plan is, is to, once it's, so, I mean, once it's, if it's changed, that you would, that you would be in agreement to sell your property to?
Yes, we, we have a, we have a verbal agreement at this time, and, and they have committed to purchase it, if verbally, if we can get the zoning changed.
So is this through a contractor or through the Choctaw Nation?
The way they, their system works, the Choctaw, or, or the contractor would actually purchase the property, build the, the facility on the property, then the Choctaw Nation buys it from them as a complete package.
My same with the houses, Dunbar houses?
I will point out that Choctaw Nation is done, is doing this all over the, the nation, the Choctaw Nation.
Okay.
Uh, Toca County is one of the last ones, as I understand, to, to put in this type of set, facility, but, um, it's been successful the rest of the, of the nation, Choctaw Nation, so that's what they're hoping to do.
Okay.
I make the motion that we approve the request submitted by Grace Fellowship.
Hold on a minute. He's raising his, Tim's raising his hand for a minute, I guess, question or something?
Do you, comments, yes, come on up, Tim.
I haven't done this before, so I'm gonna be a little nervous, but.
It's all right, Tim.
I'm all for helping, but I'd rather not have that in our area, in our residential area.
Okay, 'cause you live.
Drugs and everything else that will come along with it like Ron, but I'd rather not, I'd rather not have it in our area. If possible.
Okay, did you, uh, were you at the P and Z meeting that night? Okay.
I didn't say anything at the time, I wanted to hear more, but, yeah, I'm sorry, but I'm against it.
Okay. Uh, and I know there's concerns and, I mean, there was concerns at the other location, um, and not ever doing, not ever doing this before, uh, there's no good answer, I don't know, I think you're, there's speculation of what it could be and what it could not be, and, that's kind of the, the unknown, and if we do approve it tonight, then there definitely will have to be, do things, transitions made to adjust for any issues that arise, but, um, I'm not sure a hundred percent how this structure works, but I know you say they've done it in other places, but I haven't, I'm, I'm not aware of it, Larry, to, to know, to know enough, to know enough about what the, who's, you know, once it's sold, say the Choctaws do buy this, I mean, there's, I think, like last time, I know that you're saying they do this in other places, but we don't, we see the drawings that say Choctaw on them, but we don't know the process of how that transfers over, and if it's guaranteed that if this gentleman builds it, they do buy it, or does he manage it for a period, you know, those kind of things are the concerns.
Uh, the contractor explained to me that merely what, all he does is find the properties where they, and the Choctaws approve it, that they're okay with that particular property. He buys it, builds the, the housing on it, and then they, the Choctaw Nation buys it from him as a complete package. That's why they've done it.
Is it contractor?
No, the, every other county, I'm sorry.
J-Mock, it was J-Mock?
Yes, yes. He's the one that's built, built these duplexes in all the other counties.
Is there any other comment?
Yeah, is there any, anyone else have any, sorry.
And I, I understand where you're coming from, but I wish you would have said something during the planning and zoning meeting, because we, you know, I, I will always go with the committees, um, just because there's no reason to have a planning and zoning committee if we override them, and so, with that being said, I will still make a motion to approve the request, um, for this rezoning change.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Upstang.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number six, Larry, thank you, appreciate it.
Did it pass?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Item number six, discussion and or action to approve or reject the request submitted by First Bank to change the current R one senior family residential to C two highway commercial for the south half, south half of lot five, block sixty, Etoka City, Etoka, Oklahoma. The recommendation, the recommendation from the planning and zoning commission was in favor of the requested change. And we don't have anybody here this evening to go.
I'm gonna abstain from, but if you have any questions, I can prob, I can probably answer.
That's nice of you, that's nice of you.
Yeah, uh, well, Calvin actually came and presented through the planning and zoning, he's the location manager there, but, uh, but, yes, there's no plan to build anything there, it is just, that is the lot that we've owned for ten plus years, and it's just never been rezoned to match the other pieces.
Is it directly west of the?
Yes, it's west of the south end of the bank.
Okay, so it's on Seventh Street?
Uh, Seventh, Seventh and California.
Okay, okay.
Was there anybody that protested or anything, none, none?
And there's no structures on it now, correct?
No, and there's no plan for any structures, it's just strictly a housekeeping issue.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes. Oh, abstaining, abstaining, sorry. Thank you. Susan's like. What'd you say? Try it again.
Try it again, um, Mr. Kathy?
I meant, yes, I'm abstaining.
Sorry, I didn't mean your mind, that one.
Did you get my, yes, okay, thank you. All right, item number seven, are we, are we clear on, get it on everybody's vote, okay. Item number seven, discussion and or action to approve or reject the payment to Talon Commercial Services for payment application number three in the amount of five hundred twenty-two thousand, seven hundred sixteen dollars and forty cents for the stage project, one hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and thirty-three cents to be paid from the Department of Commerce, and two hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and eighty, seventy-eight cents to be paid from the school tax fund, with the remainder of the hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two ninety-six, twenty-nine to be paid from ACEDA.
Yep.
Did I get that all correct?
Yes.
Is there, a lot of numbers running around there, um, is there any, uh, questions, comments on this item?
That is on attachment number six, if anybody wants to look at it.
It looks really good, it's really pretty, I get a lot of comments about it.
Yeah, they, they're, uh, gonna try to get JC here, I believe, Friday for a final inspection, uh, any punch list items, they'll finish them afterwards, and then they're going to, uh, power wash and clean off that whole parking lot the first part next week, so hopefully they'll be completely out of there by midweek.
Are they doing the re, setting up the sprinkler system, was that part of it?
Uh, no, we'll have to do that, yeah, they, they're gonna do the sod, I believe, but not the sprinkler system.
If anybody doesn't have any questions, I reckon, recommend approving.
I'll second.
Uh, motion and second, roll call, please.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Johnny, you ready? Item number eight, discussion and or action just on setting a date for fall cleanup.
Ms. McGee asked me to put this on here, and, uh, so I went ahead and got with Bobby, just asking what their preference was, and they asked that we do it September the fifteenth through the nineteenth, and I told them I didn't know if y'all had anything else in mind or not, but that's just what they wanted to throw out to you.
That'll be before homecoming.
That will give us, uh, at least two full weeks before homecoming to get everything cleaned, so I thought that was a good idea, actually.
And I'll be gone that week, so.
Just make sure you get everything out there, will you?
Oh, yeah, well, it'll be gone, once I get mine out there.
There you go.
Um, yeah, as long as that, I mean, as long as we're good and can get everything kind of, I know it, usually the fall is a really large cleanup, and, uh, with all the storms we've had this spring, there's a high probability there will be a lot of debris that still lands at the curb, and it's much needed, so.
This will allow us to get it cleaned up before homecoming as opposed to not, like we have the last couple of years.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Now I recommend approving the date, September fifteenth through the nineteenth of twenty twenty-five.
I'll, I'll second.
Have a motion and sec- Motion and second, roll call, please.
Yes. Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number, item number nine, discussion and or action to approve or reject the closure of CD four eighty-eight seventy-one with First Bank to, to apply towards the purchase of the new fire truck, or the fire department engine.
If you'll remember, when we, uh, decided how we were gonna purchase the new, uh, fire truck, uh, that was one of the, uh, areas that we were gonna pay from was CDs that we had in there, which our total at that time was estimated at one seventy-one, four fifty-six, seventy-three, and nine through fourteen is where those CDs were broken down, uh, but we have to get minutes from a meeting to be able to go and get those, uh, from the banks.
And it'll pay for it in full?
It'll pay that amount, yeah, that amount that we were gonna pay, and then the, the other, I've got that broke down with the insurance funds and school tax.
Okay.
I know we typically don't do it this way, but would those items not have fit under consent agenda?
If we had a consent agenda, they would have. But we, we did not designate them as consent agenda items, so.
I got you.
We've never used that in the past, but had we put them under the consent agenda item.
We could pull anything out individually, just something, something for future, if we need to.
That's what we did at the fall.
Susan's never done that, but I'll explain that to her, and maybe in future we'll use that.
You're good, all right.
Well, how much is the fire engine?
It's, uh, one million seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred twenty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents.
And how much is in each of the CDs, do we know, or?
Uh, the estimate, it had, when we, when we first did it, was one seventy-one, four fifty-six, seventy-three. She checked, uh, last week, and it was one seventy-three, three forty-seven, fifty-one.
And that's a total of all these CDs?
Yeah, all of them added together, and they're at, uh, both banks. But we couldn't just go draw them out, we had to have minutes from a meeting showing approval.
But these were CDs that were put back for another firing, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's fire truck CDs, is what we called them.
Okay, so we're gonna pull all these CDs out, can we talk about this like this in a whole? They're agenda items.
Okay, so we're gonna pull all the CDs out, and then the remainder of it's coming from?
Uh, insurance and school tax.
The insurance from?
They're on the.
Totally.
Oh, the total fire truck.
Yeah, total fire truck.
Yeah.
And then how much?
There's a breakdown of how, how we did it back when we voted on it to actually make the purchase.
So if you recall, the original truck that was totaled was, I believe, four years ago was around five hundred and ten, five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. In that timeframe, that is how much these trucks have gone up. And the, the truck we were able to secure is a twin to the truck we currently have.
Okay.
If we were unable to secure that one, and stuff, and worked really well with us in Heartland, the new, the next truck would have had a new emission system, a different emission system on it, which would have caused the price, they were estimating to go up over two hundred thousand dollars. So those are the challenges that we face, because without these pieces of equipment, that changes potentially our ISO rating, which affects everyone's insurance in this community. So through the fire department doing this, and, and working diligently to get this done, and the city manager, this will help ensure everybody's rates stay as low as possible. So, as I've gotten off track, did we vote on number nine?
No.
Okay.
I, we haven't, I'll recommend approval.
Okay.
Of number nine, CD forty-eight, eight seventy-one, or just?
Okay.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Upstang.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number ten, discussion and/or action to approve or reject the closure of CD fifty-two, three fifty-six with First Bank to apply toward the purchase of new fire department engine.
If I have any questions, I recommend approval of fifty-two, three fifty-six CD.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Upstang.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number eleven, discussion and/or action to approve or reject closure of CD five-one-one, eight-three with First Bank to apply toward the purchase of new fire department engine.
Almost to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Upstang.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number twelve, discussion and/or action to approve or reject the closure of CD thirteen, two-two, four, seven, eight with Ameris State Bank and transfer CD funds to account number fifty-one, fifty-four, fifty-three for the purchase of the new fire department engine.
Okay, how come this one has a transfer in it like that?
Ameris State requested that we be very specific in our minutes on where we wanted the funds to be transferred to.
Because the account is at Ameris State, that's there.
Almost to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Upstang.
Item thirteen, discussion and/or action to approve or reject the closure of CD thirteen, twenty-three, seven twenty-five with Ameris State Bank and transfer the CD funds to the account fifty-one, fifty-four, fifty-three for the purchase of the new fire department engine.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Upstang.
Item number fourteen, discussion and/or action to approve or reject the closure of CD thirteen, twenty-eight, seven ninety-four with Ameris State Bank and transfer CD funds to account number fifty-one, fifty-four, fifty-three for the purchase of new fire department engine.
Recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, abstaining, sorry, I meant, yes, I'm abstaining, like Kobe said. That's what Kobe said, well, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta go that way, I gotta go that way. You just get so used to.
No, you do, you do.
All right. Item fifteen, discussion and/or action to approve or reject the payment to HCCCO for pay application number eight in the amount of six hundred thirty-five thousand, five hundred sixty-eight dollars and forty cents. Forty, a hundred and forty-five thousand, nine twenty-two fifty-five will be reimbursed by the CBG Headworks grant.
That's on attachment number seven, and four hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars and eighty-five cents will be reimbursed by Harper.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number sixteen, discussion and/or action to adopt ordinance number six fourteen, approving the rezoning of vacant property described as the south half Lot 5, Block 60, Etoka City, Etoka, Oklahoma, currently zoned R1, single-family residential to C2 highway commercial.
This is just the ordinance for the rezoning discussions you had earlier.
Okay.
It requires additional ordinance, so.
Almost to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number seventeen, discussion.
Before we move on, Ms. McGee, you abstained from the previous, uh, did you want to abstain from this one?
This one was the banks, I think, C2.
Is it the?
Commercial.
Is that the next one that was the other?
Oh, I'm sorry, they reversed the order, my apologies.
But she gave me the reminder, I didn't do, I won't do like.
You say, yes, yes, I do want to abstain. That was a good one, Kobe, I wouldn't have come up with it that quick, so I'm glad you went in front of me. All right, item number seventeen, discussion and/or action to adopt ordinance number six fifteen, approving the rezoning of vacant property described as lots one and two in the west half, or west fifty feet, excuse me, west fifty feet of lots three and four, Block eighty-six, Etoka City, Etoka, Oklahoma, currently zoned R1, single-family residential to R2 general residential.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second roll call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Upstang.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Don't follow in our footsteps. All right, as we move down the agenda, item number five, executive session. An executive session is authorized by Title twenty-five State Statute, Section three oh seven B one, discussing the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, discipline, or resignation of any individual salaried public officer or employee, namely an annual review of the performance of the city manager, Danny DeLae. At this time, do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
To enter into executive session.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
I thought you were gonna give him some.
You can have whatever you want.
Okay, this time do I hear a motion to enter into open session?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion is second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number two, discussion and possible action on annual review and performance of city manager Danny Delay to include employment status, salary, and/or benefits. Evaluation was done on Mr. Delay. And Johnny, would we approve the evaluation or just move along from that?
No.
Alright, so the evaluation was done on Mr. Delay. So no action to be taken on this item, correct? Okay. As we move down, is there any council comments?
Oh, I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
On August fourteenth, the Chakto is having a community dinner and everybody, everyone is invited.
You're celebrating my five-year anniversary here.
Well, come on, I'll sing happy birthday to you too.
Well, that's next Monday, so.
Okay, then I'll sing happy birthday. No, the fourteenth, August fourteenth.
Yeah.
It's on a Thursday, it better be on a Thursday.
Yeah, yep.
So anyway.
What time is that?
It starts at six o'clock at the Chakto Community Building.
If you will remind us of that, please.
Okay, I'll sure will try.
We went last year.
Yeah, I did, we had a good time.
You say six.
Six.
Very good. Any other comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion, I'll second.
Motion is second, roll call please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
The movement to our next meeting of the evening, the Etoka Municipal Authority, which call roll please.
Ms. Poe? Here. Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here. Move down, this is the public comment time, if anything is not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, excuse me, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of July twenty-first, 2025.
Recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second, roll call please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number two, discussion and/or action to approve or reject the payment to HCCO for payment application number eight in the amount of six hundred thirty-five thousand, five hundred sixty-eight dollars and forty cents. Of that, four hundred eighty-nine thousand, six forty-five, eighty-five will be reimbursed by the ARPA Headworks grant.
Okay, and this is going to be the reverse of the previously mentioned one on the city council agenda, which would mean one hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty-five cents will be reimbursed from CDBG grant.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second, roll call please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number three, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting a three-year employment contract with the city manager Danny Delay.
I don't remember having to do that, but I recommend approving.
I would just point out this, well, no, I won't.
Okay.
I did make a couple of corrections on this.
Good.
You can change those.
Have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
Wait a minute. Oh, we're putting this back on the agenda?
No, we're gonna go ahead and do it tonight. He already approved, provided a copy of it.
I was waiting, because I thought we were, I thought we were.
I'll second.
Okay. Clear as mud?
Yes.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Alright, as we move down, is there any new business? Hearing none, do I hear any trustee comments?
I'll motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, I have a motion and a second, a roll call please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Moving to our last meeting of the evening, the Etoka Investment Development Authority, which call roll please.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Ms. Poe?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here.
Again, this is the public comment time, if anything is not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. And hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of July twenty-first, 2025.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion is second, roll call please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting and rejecting the Economic Development Director's report. Mr. Delay, good evening.
Thank you. My report is on attachment number two, if anyone has any questions.
Do we have any, like, announcements that we can make or nothing yet?
No.
Okay. I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion is second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number three, discussion and/or action to approve or reject the remaining portion of payment to Talon Commercial Services for pay application number three in the amount of one hundred twenty-eight thousand... for pay application number three in the amount of one hundred twenty-eight thousand, two ninety-six, twenty-nine for the stage project.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion is second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number four, discussion and/or action to accept an amended first, uh, right, a first refusal agreement between Aceda and Philip and Pamela Allen covering the property at Township Two South, Range Eleven East. And this is just for a continuation of that first right of refusal.
Yes.
Right?
This is what we already did though, right?
Yes.
Okay. Almost to approve. I'll second.
Motion is second, roll call please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Alright, as we move down, executive session, item number five, an executive session as authorized by Title twenty-five State Statute, section three oh seven-three to discuss the right of first refusal concerning the property owned by a Fishing Hole Holdings LLC in part of Lot Seven and Lot Eight of Block Twenty-four in the original township of Atoka, Atoka, Atoka County, Oklahoma. Do I, at this time, do I hear a motion to enter into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Executive session once again.
I get to my arms, my arms.
All right. All right, this time do I hear a motion to enter into open session?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion of second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Catty?
Yes. All right, as we return from executive session, easy for me to say. Item number one, acknowledgment of minutes of executive session, minutes were taken. Item number two, discussion and/or possible action on exercising the right of first refusal concerning property owned by A Fishing Hole Holdings LLC in part of Lot seven and Lot eight in Block twenty-four of the original townsite of Otoka, Otoka County, Oklahoma, or in the alter alternative amended in a certain redevelopment agreement between parties dated April fifth, twenty twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to not exercise the right of first refusal concerning property owned by A Fishing Hole Holdings LLC.
And I'll second.
Have a motion of second, roll call please.
Seeing no new business, is there any trusty comments?
Hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call please.
Oh, my God.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Sherrill.
Kind of zoned out.
Thank you all, appreciate it, sorry we had a longer one this evening.